Good morning Birmingham, today is August 2nd, 2022. The time is 9:32. I call to order the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Birmingham. If you will please join us, the invocation will be led by District 7 Administrative Assistant, Mr. Lozey Brown, and Pledge of Allegiance will be by Counselor Darryl O'Quinn.
Good morning, Madam President.
Good morning.
Madam President, Pro Tem, to the Mayor, his staff and team. Let us bow in a brief moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, we come this morning thanking you for your grace and mercy. We pray a simple prayer. Guide us, lead us, in our efforts to be of service to our citizens of Birmingham, Alabama, Jefferson County, and those that touch our community. May we consistently be minded that we are here to do the work for the masses, to take care of our citizens to the best of our abilities, to provide the needed and necessary services. Dear God, we need you. We ask that you come by here. Give us the vision, give us the fortitude, give us the mission, and let us accomplish all that we set out to do in betterment of our city. In your name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, please to look the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Brown, for that prayer. Good morning, Mr. Clerk.
Morning.
You'll call the roll, please?
Counselor Member Abbott, Counselor Member Clark.
Present.
Counselor Member Moore, Counselor Member O'Quinn, Counselor Member Tate.
Morning.
Counselor Member Williams, Counselor Member Woods, Counselor Pro Tem Smithman.
Morning.
Morning, Counselor President Alexander.
Thank you very much.
See Counselor Abbott.
Present. Good morning, Mrs. Abbott. At this time, councilors, I would like to ask for a motion and a second for approval of the minutes from the March 1st, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Okay, um, that was Counselor Member Tate. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Those minutes from March 1st, 2022 are approved. The minutes are not ready from March 8th, 2022, through July 26th, 2022. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Madam President.
Good morning.
This mic is very loud. Good morning to the entire council, it's good to see everybody, and good morning to the public. Just a brief, some brief notes, Madam President. The first is, um, I think as a community, we will always continue to uplift the Reverend Fred Shodelsworth. There is an event at the Birmingham Museum of Art called Illuminating Shodelsworth. Um, the Museum of Art is hosting this event honoring the life and legacy of my hero, the Reverend Fred Shodelsworth. I think we all know he was an integral leader in the 1963 Birmingham campaign and helped to bring national attention to the integration efforts happening in our city as well as during the civil rights movement. And this event will be free, and it's a discussion with members of his family. The artist Rico Gaston, also New York Times journalist Sid Harther Minter, whose name I probably did not pronounce right, and Martha Boyer, the educational coordinator for Bethel Baptist Church. Again, this event is free and it will take place Wednesday, August 3rd, that's tomorrow, at 6:00 PM at the Birmingham Museum of Art, and you can learn more at artsbma.org. Again, that's artsbma.org. Um, in addition to that, Madam President, um, there is, uh, council, there's a blood drive tomorrow as well, August 3rd. Um, the event will take place from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. It is at the Battle Award Auditorium, which is located at 1930 Reverend Abraham Woods Jr. Boulevard. To make an appointment, you can go to redcrossblood.org, again, that's redcrossblood.org, and enter the code BHM. Again, that code is BHM. Donors will receive a $20 Amazon gift card and, of course, a cool t-shirt. I just want to encourage our employees, if you hear the sound of my voice, of course we'll send out additional correspondence, and that's to the council, you and your staff as well. We want to encourage our team members across the city, firefighters, police officers, public works, those who are in general services, and all our employees to please, if you can, take the time to set an appointment, um, and/or walk in. If you walk in, it may be a longer process, but we want to encourage all of our employees to give blood. Two more notes, Madam President, one being Food Truck Friday Returns. Um, the city's popular Food Truck Friday event will return to Short 20th in front of City Hall this Friday, August 5th. It will be from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and it will be held every Friday of this month, so be sure to come out. Some of your favorite food trucks will be there, and you have to eat, you have to eat lunch, so why not? Um, one last note on a serious note, Madam President and Council. Yesterday, I had an extensive conversation with the Cynthia Ralstein. Um, she used to be a district attorney for the Jefferson County. She was also the prosecutor on the case for the gentleman murdered my brother 10 years ago. And last week, I had a conversation with all the homicide detectives for the city of Birmingham. Sat in a room for a short time and just talked about what resources they need to continue to bring justice to all these family members, um, who've had a loved one taken. That includes your own colleague, Counselor Tate. And we talked about various things. They left the room and talked to the, um, leadership of the police department just about what the city is doing around gun violence in particular. Um, I think we all know that homicides are up this year compared to the same time we were last year, August 2nd of 2021, compared to August 2nd of 2022. Um, I mentioned that Cynthia Ralstein just because memories were triggered, just based on what my own family has gone through. And there are many, many families right now in our city limits, um, who are dealing with grief, who are dealing with pain, who are dealing with anger and sadness over the loss of their loved one who was snatched or taken. I know there are a lot of different things going on on the streets, um, but no one deserves to be murdered. And particularly, all homicides are not the same, and a lot of these have been by the use of gun. And within, within the use of gun, a lot of them have been on and in private property and homes, a lot of them have been in private vehicles, and some have been on our streets. And we continue to assess the situation daily. I think what I want to remind you all in the public that, um, we're not going to be able to arrest our way out of gun violence. Gun violence is not limited to the city limits of Birmingham. Uh, I talked to my, my colleagues across the state, City of Mobile, City of Montgomery, City of Tuscaloosa, and other areas of the state. Um, gun violence is at a spike in those areas too. And it's not, when I say gun violence, I'm not just talking about those killed, I'm talking about those who were actually shot and survived, which is an extreme number as well. Um, but it's not limited to the state of Alabama, it's not limited to the southeast. Um, this is a national crisis across our entire nation, and it's not limited to urban cores, and it's not limited to a certain party. And I believe this was a crisis pre-pandemic. I think we've seen a spike since 2020, so the last two years. But coming back home locally, what I would want to, want to remind the council and everybody else is, we passed a budget, we received our ARPA funds, and we've received other funding sources. And I want to remind the public what we're doing with tax dollars, with their tax dollars to address the situation. Um, the first is enforcement, and so if we looking at solving gun violence with, using a toolbox and multiple tools in this toolbox, the first tool we have is enforcement. Um, and that is usually that first line of defense is our police department, where we continue to give funding and resources towards not only retention but recruitment efforts as well, to make sure we have officers on the streets to address and respond to crime. Part of that enforcement is also technology. Um, this council has been very kind and gracious as it relates to continuing to, um, support various technology efforts, um, for us to be responding to crime that not only include ShotSpotter but other forms of technology to help us continue to address issues. Um, but the second is prevention, and the third is reentry. This council's been very kind in supporting, um, a few millions of dollars, um, towards a program that allows us to put violence interrupters on the streets and other ways of reentry efforts to help those who come out of prison, whether they're in state custody or federal custody, to make sure they don't commit and/or do the same things that got them in trouble in the first place. And as a city, as a government, we continue to do everything we can in partnership with organizations on the ground who are providing services to our community. And even on a prevention measure, how we engage our youth, even this year, supporting conflict resolution, financial literacy, and other things for our youth, and so they don't have to, um, make bad or poor decisions that get them hurt or they end up hurting someone else. Um, but the truth is, that may not be enough, and the onus may not necessarily be on the 10 of us, because it's impossible for the 10 of us or all of our police officers to be in every home, to be in every private vehicle, um, to be in between every conflict that exists in this community. What we can do is continue to use our platform, um, to speak to, um, people making better choices. What we can do is continue to seek help from the state, even though they make laws that take away pistol permits that allows fools to just walk around here, drive around here reckless with guns. What I do want to encourage the public to do, and this is a, this is legit a public service announcement, Madam President and Council, please do not leave your legal gun in your vehicles. There is a considerable increase, not just in Birmingham but across the nation, of, um, death, including breaking and entering vehicles, where the number one thing they're taking are guns. Um, these guns are being used in commissions of all forms of crime, whether it's the actual person breaking into your car or selling your actual gun. Um, and it is very high in the city limits of Birmingham. One of the ways we can keep guns or decrease some of the violence off our streets, um, is actually by law-abiding citizens, please do not leave your vehi, please do not leave your vehicle unlocked. First, they're not smashing and breaking windows anymore, they're just picking the lock because so many of our citizens are leaving their vehicles unlocked. And the number one thing they're looking for and the number one thing they're taking are legal guns. And so again, I want to encourage the public, um, please lock your vehicles and do not leave your legal, your, your legal purchase gun, um, as a legal gun owner, in your vehicle. But this is, this is where I want to think outside the box, and this, this is nothing that the mayor and the council can control, but this is what I want to, this is what I want to suggest and promote. I think technology has done this country and this world some good service. It's good and bad in technology. Um, I think some of us can go to our vehicle and we need to use technology, our cell phones to open up our cell phones, we can use our thumbprint or our facial recognition. For some of us, for our doors, we can use a thumbprint. Um, I think all of us are pro-Second Amendment rights, but we can also acknowledge that the guns that are being used in the commission of most of these crimes are not the guns that people use for hunting. And so I think it's time for manufacturers across the nation and the world to get smart on gun technology, that if a certain person breaks in your vehicle and takes your legal gun, no different than the thumbprint you need to use for, to open your car door or your office door, um, that a person who doesn't own the gun wouldn't be able to pull the trigger because their trigger finger or whatever finger they use doesn't match that gun because they're not the legal owner of that gun. I know that may sound crazy or thinking out of the box, um, but when you're tied, when a, when a local municipality's hands are restricted by state laws that actually promote more guns on the street, when you actually have more guns in the country than you have people, um, when you actually have just the transaction and this, and the proliferation of guns in our community, um, when you haven't been able to solve conflict at the rate you want, but people choose and use guns to solve their personal conflict with a loved one or a friend that they know, um, then local governments are going to need the helps, the help of the states or state laws. Local governments are going to need the help of actual manufacturers. Local government is going to need the help of law-abiding citizens to not keep their guns in their cars. Um, local government is going to need, um, citizens who have information to pivot from the street culture of whether it's street justice in the form of retaliation or no snitching when they know someone, they know the person that's doing the shooting or shot, won't share that information with us, that allows police officers to actually arrest or bring something on the continuum to the DA's office. Um, these are all the things that are just thoughts that I wanted to share with the council and the public, because we acknowledge that this is a crisis, we acknowledge that we can't be silent about it, about it, and we acknowledge that even with our citizens' tax dollars related to enforcement, prevention, and reentry efforts, we're doing every single thing we can, but we still need the public's help, we need other forms of higher government help, um, we need law-abiding citizens' help, and believe it or not, those who are gun manufacturers, they can help solve this issue, um, because I know if this technology for everything else can be used, then they can use that same technology for guns. That concludes the mayor's report, Madam President and Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate you bringing this conversation forward, and, um, just, I know growing up, my mother always said, "Knowledge is power." So the more we know about these, um, things that are in our toolbox as a city that we can use, how it's not just the 10 of us, it's, um, the situation we're in, we're relying on everyone in the public, as you said, we can't be in every home, we can't be in every car, we can't expect our police officers to be there. And so if, um, just thinking outside the box, I think that will really help us as we go forward when we talk about technology. And, um, if you know something, say something. It's, and conflict resolution, it's just so many different things that impact the situation that we're in today. So thank you for, um, bringing this conversation forward, because I know each of us, we're citizens, want to know, what are we doing as a city? What can I do as an individual? And so I appreciate that. Also, um, as a retiree of the American Red Cross, I want to encourage our city employees to also give blood. I, I hope you know, the summer months can be very, very crucial in trying to, um, collect blood and plasma to meet the needs of patients and hospitals. So everyone who is eligible can give, I would like to reiterate that as well. Councilors, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right, at this time, we will have announcements of boards and agencies, any explorations in September, Mr. Clerk?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much. At this time, councilors, we'll have consideration of the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, would you read those items for us?
Okay, our consent agenda starts on page two with items one and two. Page three, we have items three, four, five, and six on consent. Page four, we have items seven and eight on consent. Page five, items 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 are on consent. Page six, items 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20 are on consent. And page seven, items 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25 are on consent. Uh, page eight, items 26, 27, 28, 29 are on consent. Page nine, we have items 30, 31, 32, and 33 on consent. Page 10, we have items 34, 35, 36, and 37 on consent. Page 11, items 38, 39, 40, and 41 are on consent. And on page 12, we have items 42, 43, 44, and 45 on consent, and you have one addendum item.
All right, thank you. Councilors, at this time, are there any items that you would like to add or remove from Go ahead, Counselor Williams. Good morning.
Uh, on item number 10, I didn't have, uh, I didn't do much of that, but I'm all the damage. Uh, I'm not that much.
Yep, this was being appointed by the mayor.
It is, okay.
Item number 10, Mr. Mayor.
He's good, Chaz will get it for me.
Yeah.
We're good, we're good, we're good.
Thank you. Good question. Any others? Yes, sir, Counselor Moore?
I just had a question about item number one. Um, just wanted to ask and be sure that this was coming from, uh, bond finances as opposed to, uh, ARPA, uh, funds from the council? Because I know one of the, uh, capital projects was, um, something that, you know, was a part of my ARPA project, and so just wanted to be sure.
Yes, sir. I'm 100% bond refinance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, do you have to come?
Just hope you're excited about number one as we are.
Yes, very, very, thank you.
We're, I think we're all excited for everyone, thank you. Little jumping jacks up here. Thank you very much. All right, councilors, anything else? No other items? Before we consider the consent agenda, all items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation, and those indicated with a P and asterisks, will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Councilors, can I entertain a motion and second for approval of the consent agenda?
Second?
All right, before we, uh, consider the item, Counselor Woods, what item is that? You wanted to pull that from consent? All right. Councilors, we're pulling item number one from consent. We still have a second and a, uh, motion, a second, any discussion?
Uh, um, motion by, um, Counselor Member Moore, seconded by Pro Tem.
Pro Tem. Okay, we're open for discussion, Ms. Clark. 48, it's a public hearing, it has to be, um, can't be added, isn't it? But thank you, though. Any other questions? All right, at this time, then I'll turn it back over to Mr. Clerk for the call to vote.
Uh, Moore hands Pro Tem, all right. All right, go, um, I forgot, we don't have the iPad. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, let's see, now I miss everyone voted for that and put that up.
All right, thank you. So those items that were listed as consent, those have been approved. If you're here for any of those items, that means that your item has been approved. I will continue with the rest of the meeting. Mr. Clerk?
Okay, uh, first item is item one, an ordinance, uh, we did pull one, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, an ordinance to further amend the capital fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023 by appropriating $1,293,532.28 to Third Avenue West Streetscape, $675,000 to Carver Avenue Southwest, $168,503.89 to City Park, um, $109,413 to East Lake Park, $50,000, $50,372.21 to fire facilities improvement, $20,278.84 to fire facilities improvement, $750,000 to Forest Park Avenue Business District Streetscape, $96,477.20 to Germania Park improvements, $475,000 to Hannover Circle repaving, $37,561.19 to Henry Crumpton Recreation Center improvements, 500, I'm sorry, Henry Crumptons, and then we're here, $598,615 to Hooper City Phase 5 Drainage Improvements, $150,000 to Museum of Art Elevator Repair, $815,000 to Pine Grove Vista Drainage, $508,337.80 to Togo Elementary School Access Improvements, $400,000 to 19th Street Enslie Improvement, $150,000 to Carver Road Roundabout, $1,500,000 to First, 41st Street Streetscape and Drainage, $1,200,000 to Green Springs Highway Streetscape Phase 2, $500,000 to Richard Aronson Jr. Boulevard Streetscape, $1,250,000 to CityWalk, $500,000 to Second Avenue South Streetscape, $500,000 to Hawkins Golf Course and Repairs, $400,000 to Vulcan Park Improvements, $375,000 to Rickwood Field Improvements, and $500,000 to Interstate Greenway Project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk, for motion.
Uh, so moved.
All right, thank you. Counselor Woods, you had pulled this item for consent.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Madam President. Wanted to get, um, excited to see a lot of these projects happen, but want to kind of get some feedback on the process of project selection and then kind of what's in the queue next and, and really get up to speed to kind of get a better feel for how that determination is made, uh, which capital projects will get picked up when, and then kind of what's on tap next.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, go ahead.
Madam President, uh, to Counselor Woods' question and to the entire council, um, I think before you, item number one is 24 projects. Majority of those, uh, on my, on one of my count, um, Chaz Mitchell can correct me if I'm wrong, 18 were already in the queue, right? So these are projects that needed, had a funding gap and/or were already in existence, and we need additional funding to close the gap, um, so we can move these projects along. Um, six of them, um, I think were like critical items related to citywide facilities. So for example, I think you have Rickwood Field, um, in District 1, you have Dunn Hawkins Rec Center as it relates to that course, um, and then you have a few others, um, they don't...
Vulcan Park.
Oh, Vulcan Park, pull the list up. Oh, thank you. So that's how the 18 and six came along, related to District 1 and relates to all districts, but I'll go with District 1. Um, District 1 has some, District 1 has some city assets such as Penns, East Penns and Rec Center, um, it has, um, Springville, Springville Library, it has Dunn Hawkins now, if I'm correct, um, which I imagine a lot of the residents don't know is in District 1 now. You, you shared that with me. And so I think as city assets, we need to, um, not just those things, but I imagine your residents are coming to you about sidewalks, they're coming to you about streets, um, just like the residents are coming to 2 through 9. Um, I think I've said it and I'll keep saying it, um, Kevin Moore and his team have already started the preliminary conversations. Um, I think soon, um, I doubt I'll participate in that initial conversation, but they'll talk to our bond lawyers and bond team about what does it look like to go to the market? When we go to the market, those categories, I think I spoke to y'all about two Tuesdays ago, two Tuesdays ago, two Tuesdays ago, I'm sorry, I can't say that. Um, they include, um, city assets citywide, um, which include rec centers, libraries, um, will include, um, well, what we wanted to include, how about that? Libraries, rec centers, citywide, which include in District 1. Uh, we wanted to include, um, fire stations, which I think District 1 has a lot. Um, I think we wanted to include, um, streets, um, as well as all other categories we can get. What we need to determine is what's the cost for bond versus, what's my other term? Warrants. We know bonds is more money. We also know bond is a process that requires us to go before the public. We know warrants is probably a lower cost, um, but that's just approval by the council. Um, we need the biggest bang, so those same citizens that are coming to you, I hope they'll be in a position to actually vote on the, the max bond we can get to address those issues we want, not just in District 1 but citywide. Process-wise, um, I don't think it'd be squeaky wheel. I think if you look at the fire department, for example, all 32 stations, there's been an assessment on work that needs to be done, so that's an actual order, so it's not out of whack. Um, I think Sinead has done something very, I mean, Sinead Bennett has done something very similar, similar to Rickwood. So it's not out of whack. I think Sine has done something very, I mean, Sine Bennett has done something very similar to rec centers. Of course, you all approved the half a million dollars for the streets, so the streets should be great again. So these are not necessarily subjective from a process standpoint. We'll be very objective in addressing how we do streets, how we do parks and rec centers, how we do fire stations. And of course, the library's done its due diligence as well, how we engage libraries. So all of that's, all that's in the order based on assessments they've already done. Now we just need to go get the money so we can do it wholesale, not just in District 1, but citywide.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think, you know, for me, I know library's been one of the projects we have talked about. You know, we've got rec centers, we've got some streetscape requests, and we've got some pretty many thoroughfares through there. And so being able to get those projects at least queued up in the capital budget to be able to start scoping them out and putting some numbers to them so we can identify some funding. And so just asking for some intentionality around making sure that area gets included in some of those citywide projects and things like that, so.
Thank you. Counselor Pro Tim, yes?
Mayor Woodfin did discuss this, and he kind of said it partly because of Tiddlesville Library. And a lot of times, in order for us to get the quotes, the library board administration kind of has to put in a request to get that assessment done. That's why you probably haven't seen that for a lot of libraries. I just really hope that the library board, well, the administration, not the board, works with us to get those numbers because we can ask for that all we want. We can go to the bond market, but unless they take that first step forward, it's going to be hard for us to get it. And learning from Counselor Abbott and beyond budget and finance. You know, we're in an interesting situation because we just went to the market. So I think, you know, Chaz and Kevin also have to look at, okay, how is this going to affect our rating and everything else? So I guess just, just give them a little grace, I guess, and I believe Mayor Woodfin will do that. But with our rec centers, that's something we can do with our discretionary funding, too. We can ask our state reps for. I think there are different avenues for money that we can use that for. I am very excited about this for other districts. I think there's only one for District 6. But I want to say kudos to Counselor Moore. That's a really big project that you're about to get done in less than a year. So I want to make sure you shout that from the top of City Hall that you're getting this done, and I'd look forward to seeing other things done. Madam Pro Tim, you know, President, the fact that you're getting Jefferson Avenue done and everything else done, I'm really impressed. And I'm really impressed with this council. I'm really proud of y'all for these projects, and I look forward to seeing what we do with our ARPA funding as well.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tim. I think Mr. Mayor had more information.
Just short. I think, I think Counselor Woods has a, I think his concern is fair. I think each council's concern is fair, because I talked to all of you. I know your constituents in each of your individual districts are hitting y'all hard. And when I say hitting you, calls, emails, texts, not just neighborhood officers, but like, yo, this sidewalk has been looking like this for a minute. This street hasn't been paved in a minute. This library hasn't had love in a minute. This rec center basketball court hasn't had love in a minute. I say, I'll let this say that literally, I want to reiterate something. This is the main point I want you to take away. That meeting is set for the finance team to meet with bond counsel and the bond team. They're going to go deep, and my only concern is just where we are as a, as a nation and the world with inflation and possible recession. What does that do for rates? But we want to max out on what we can do and based on all the calls, emails that are coming in to all 10 of our offices. I think we presented unified front and share to the public, this is something you need to vote on. I think they'll be willing and ready to do it so we can get these projects moving.
Thank you. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a couple of questions. I too am pleasantly surprised that, by this funding opportunity for projects in District 8, but I wanted to ask about the funding for CityWalk. Is that to, you know, enhance what's there or reimburse for what was, what's already in place? Or I know there's going to be considerable maintenance expenses going forward, and I was just curious what this is going for.
So I'm going to try to explain this. If I get it wrong, Chaz Mitchell, please jump in and correct me if I misspeak. I misspoke to Valerie Abbott last week, so I don't want to do that again. I totally got that wrong. So this is actually an agreement that the council approved. The funding's coming in place to make good on that agreement. I believe this total project was over, it was, I think, 370 million. It was definitely over 350 million total. That is state property, but the state did want the city to participate at a certain level. After conversations with the finance department, transportation, and negotiation and back and forth, this was agreed upon. I think from a process standpoint, it went before one or two committees before the council voted on it in previous time. I don't remember the month or the year at this point. Some of this will be maintenance, but I want to make myself very clear to the public, this is state property, one. Two, they asked the city to actually manage the property for them. The city said no. I think I want to take the time to explain why. Those, those 10 city blocks are going to require a significant amount of upkeep and investment. City of Birmingham already has 117 green spaces we are responsible for citywide across 99 neighborhoods. The 117th one came on probably two years ago in One Pratt Park. One Pratt Park, for example, I believe Kevin Moore told me about a year and a half ago, just maintenance alone is close to 225,000 a year just to maintain that space. I didn't think we could afford and add another 10 blocks that are not our property, be responsible for that upkeep, and I come before y'all to say, hey, we got to do this, but then one of y'all or somebody in the community knock our heads off because we found time to invest local tax dollars in 10 city blocks that are not ours and not invest them in the other 98 areas of town. So the state went back to BJCC. BJCC manages and operates the state property of those 10 blocks that are CityWalk. The City of Birmingham is not managing that space. But I do want to make this point, Madam President, because there was some talk last week. There's a three-way conversation between BJCC, City of Birmingham, and the county related to making sure we secure the space from a public safety standpoint. That is separate and apart from this, but I don't think there would be a lift for this council. I don't think there would be anything the council will be actually be voted on related to that public safety joint effort. There are over 90 cameras across those 10 blocks. There's T-shirt security that's provided by the BJCC, and the BJCC is responsible for the actual, in conjunction with the state, are responsible for the maintenance upkeep, day-to-day operations, et cetera. I hope I answered your question.
You certainly did. I have one more regarding the Interstate Greenway project. Is that related or similar or altogether different? What is it?
Again, this is a joint effort. I had to remember, so I had to go to the guru. This is a joint effort between the city, county, UAB. In the private sector, so this is a...
Gateways, the gateway?
Yeah, this is the gateway. This is the gateway project. You already approved. This is the funding for it to keep it going, but this is the...
Right, ongoing maintenance.
Maintenance cleanup effort.
Okay. And are we calling it the Greenway or the Gateway? Okay, okay.
You go with both G's, Madam.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Moore?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say one thing, you know. Thank you on behalf of Pine Knoll Vista Neighborhood because I know that this is something that, you know, that neighborhood has really been, you know, on my head about. I can go to neighborhood association meetings now and not sweat because we're actually making moves on this project. And so just on behalf of that neighborhood, like, thank you because I know that it was a potential threat to that, that area, and so we're rectifying it, so.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to echo what Counselor Moore said. Thank you, Mayor Woodfin, for Hooper City because I'm like Counselor Moore. I stepped into Alliance then in Hooper City as well. But, you know, of course, we can, we can hold it, too. But Mayor Woodfin, I really want to thank you for echoing and talking about CityWalk because Counselor Clark and I were at the Drew Hill Neighborhoods, and that was something that came up about, you know, CityWalk and the exhibition driving and those spinning donuts, you know, at CityWalk. So that was one thing that Mr. Snyder did comment on about. Question was raised, like, what are we going to do about it, you know? And so one of the things we talked about, like, from a public safety standpoint, he did talk about the partnership, you know, with the city and the county to coming together because we have been getting calls of, and just last night, I got a call, I mean, on a neighborhood meeting about, you know, the exhibition driving and, you know, what are we, what were we going to do about it? And just this week, I was on Third Avenue and two motorcycles boxed me in and a car was in a right lane, and they just decided that they wanted to, you know, do their thing. So when I did, you know, saw that video and saw people recording it, all I could think about, that car spinning out of control and hitting the support beam that holds up the freeway. So had that happened and you, you know, caused damage, then you got to shut down a whole freeway because people want to do things that are illegal. And so what I assure, you know, residents is, you know, I'm glad that you all are looking to, you know, put some measures in place to make sure that this doesn't happen because that's a beautiful space down there. And I just do not want to see, you know, these type of investments and people think that we, that the city owes them something. If you want a race, go to Alaska Mountain and pay $20. Spend all you want and do what you need to do up there. I mean, because people lives, you jeopardizing people's lives doing things that, you know, in your opinion, you're not thinking at that moment, but it can cause you some serious problems down, 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 down the road. So thank you, Mayor, for, you know, having this conversation.
Thank you, Counselor Tate. At this time, Counselor, Counselor Quinn, I apologize.
I just want to say congratulations to Counselor Abbott because it looks like Hanover Circle is finally going to get paved after decades. It's not even in my district, but I'm excited for you because I've been up there and it's horrendous. So congratulations.
All right, Counselor Woods?
Thank you. Did want to circle back around on one thing with the library. I know the Springville Road Library, they have, they did develop a scope, and I think everybody's on this, that is in the queue. And so we are aware of kind of what they presented, so didn't want them to catch any flak for that because they did kind of take care of what they needed to do on that front to an extent. And then also, talking about the, I don't know what to call it, street racing, sliding, exhibition was... But yeah. We are going to, on August 10th, we're going to present basically the automated traffic enforcement thing that was on our legislative agenda last year. Kind of going to take a different tack this year and kind of go ahead and share with the public more kind of what, what that looks like, at least from this point of view, and kind of what those thoughts are. So we will kind of present what that bill was and what, and how we think that can impact things like street racing and people shutting down intersections and how we can identify who those folks are and what, where those vehicles are. So did want to kind of mention that because that is a growing concern and, you know, it's kind of, some of these roadways are getting dangerous in the way people just, you know, just don't respect life almost. You're risking your life to get where you're going a few minutes earlier, blowing through red lights, but shutting down intersections and spinning around, and it's becoming dangerous. We have seen people injured, people killed behind that. And so definitely want to get some stuff in place, and I thought that was one of the tools that could be really impactful. So I know we'll present that on August 10th if anybody's interested in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Woods, and I do appreciate you letting us know about that conversation that's going to take place. I believe we're all very interested in that and how we see when we go in, we create and develop the legislative agenda, how these items are very important to us. And so I feel get more information to us about that from your committee meeting. Thank you very much. At this time, counselors, I believe we did have a motion and a second, so Mr. Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
Counselmember Abbott. Counselmember Clark. Counselmember Moore. Counselmember O'Quinn.
Aye.
Counselmember Tate. Counselmember Williams.
Aye.
Counselmember Woods. Counselor Pro Tim Smith. Counsel President Alexander.
Aye. Thank you. Item number one passes. Next item.
Should be it, item nine, and we're going to change the language a little bit. A resolution pointing four members to the zoning board of adjustment for one, well, actually, it's still going to be four, okay. For one non-affiliated member, said term expiring November 25, 2023. One state licensed real estate broker, said term expiring November 25, 2028. One non-affiliated member, said term expiring November 25, 2027. And one member changed to serve a supernumerary expiring August 2, 2029. So that went from one supernumerary to, went to one supernumerary, not two for this particular item. And it's for a seven-year term for the supernumerary.
All right, thank you. Counselor Abbott, as chair, would you like to give us some information on this item? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, the committee is recommending that Wanda Wright be appointed to the vacant Realtor seat previously held by Timothy Taylor. The expiration date is 11/25/28. Is that accurate, Mr. Clerk? The expiration dates were a little bit off. So the second one is Scotty McClainy is recommended for the vacant, non-affiliated seat previously held by Lenis Perkins. That expiration date is... I'm not sure what it is.
Okay, which one is state licensed?
Lenis Perkins, he's non-affiliated.
The non-affiliated member?
And see, the chart we got from your office said he expired in '06, so I figured that had to be an error.
Okay. So I guess he would be the November 25, 2027?
Twenty-seven.
The other two, well, you got a non-affiliated, 2/23, and you got, well, you have two non-affiliated members, I'm sorry.
Yes, so he'll be 27.
Okay, he'll be the 27?
Okay, and then Torrin Darling Brazel is recommended for the vacant, non-affiliated seat previously held by Brandon Littleton. And his expiration date was 11/25/23.
Okay.
And then Shia Hendricks is recommended for the second supernumerary position on the ZBA. We're allowed to have two based on Section 4537A56 of the Code of Alabama, and we only have one. So the ZBA needs all the help it can get, so we're going to give them a second supernumerary. So those are our recommendations. And I move approval.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
One quick question, because I was trying to listen to what you were saying. Did we, did we do the real estate broker?
Yes, that was the first one.
Okay.
Wanda Wright.
Wanda Wright.
He's taking the place of Timothy Taylor, and he was the Realtor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Previously.
All right, motion. Who made the motion?
Ms. Abbott.
Okay, and the second was? Tate, Counselor Tate?
I'll say the motion.
All right, that's good. All right, that's good.
And Ms. Abbott, Torrin and Scotty are females.
Yes. Did I say they were men? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I know that they are females, so I just misspoke.
All right. Thank you, any other discussion councilors? All right, we've heard the names of those, um, appointees by the public, I want to say Public Safety Committee, but we know what committee. Thank you, Ms. Abbott.
Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning. Thank you so much.
See all the P words.
All right, Mr. Clerk.
All right, Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods. President Pro Tem Smithman.
Aye.
Councilmember Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Alexander.
That's all. All right, that item passes. I do want to thank the committee for the work that you did in, uh, making these appointments. And I want to thank the residents who, uh, put their names out there to serve. I know these, uh, particular, um, committee needed this representation and sometimes we couldn't even do business. And so, we really appreciate, uh, everyone and we look forward to your service. Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
I should be item 10. A resolution confirming the appointment of one member to the Birmingham Airport Authority as appointed by the mayor for a six-year term expiring July the 29th, 2028. Now, Mr. Hilliard, you get that?
All right, Mr. Hilliard.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
The mayor's making one appointment today to the Birmingham Airport Authority. It is, uh, Mr., well, Attorney Tommy Spina. This term is from July 30th, 2022 to July 29th, 2028, is a six-year term. Did you have any questions?
Could you repeat the name again?
Attorney Tommy Spina. Actually, don't have that, but I'll get back to you. On that height information.
All right, councilors, any questions regarding this appointment? Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. Uh, do we have a second? Do we have to make a second? And we do have to vote on this, right?
Motion, a second. Still need a resolution.
Motion, a second for the resolution for this appointment.
Second. Councilmember O'Quinn and second one, Moore. Councilmember Moore. All right, voting should be open. Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
President Pro Tem Smithman.
Aye.
Council President Alexander.
Thank you very much. That item passes and we welcome Attorney Spina to that, uh, Parks Airport Authority Board. And we thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this recommendation. Next item.
I think we're going to 46. Item 46, a resolution setting a public hearing August the 23rd, 2022 to consider adoption of ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham. Case number ZAC 2022-8 to change zone district boundaries from CI-1 contingency light manufacturing district to QC-2 qualified general commercial district filed by Brian Hattrick of LBYD Engineers, applicant, um, representing the owner David Uier for properties located at 102 West Oxmoor Road and 12 Oxmoor Road situated in the southwest quarter of Section 22 Township 18 South Range 3 West Birmingham.
I move approval.
Second.
Second. Williams, Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
All right.
All right, councilors, this is a motion and a second to set a public hearing on August 23rd, uh, for a resolution, uh, for property that's in District 7. Any questions regarding setting this hearing? All right, Mr. Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
President Pro Tem Smithman.
Aye.
President Alexander.
Aye, thank you. That item passes, so we've set that public hearing for August 23rd, 2022. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
47, communications, uh, receiving the emergency repair notice from the purchasing agent relative to the repairs due to the storm sewer failure at 3448 Cliff Road. And did, did we put the denim on consent? No, we didn't. Or did we?
I'm sorry.
Did we put the denim on consent? No?
You know what? We didn't because I didn't let it, but it could have gone on consent.
Well, it was a public hearing and that was the reason.
That's right, my bad. I'm, I'm thinking again. Okay, we.
All right, so item 48.
We could have, but I, I missed that.
I did, sir.
Okay. A resolution, amended resolution number 1213-22 adopted by the council July the 5th, 2022, which approved the application of Slice LLC for a special events retail license 140 to be used at Birmingham Art Walk for September the 9th, 2022 to September the 10th, 2022 at 20th Street North, First Avenue North to Fourth Avenue North and Ford Street Parking Lot, Birmingham, to change the location of the event to 20th Street North from Mars Avenue North to Fourth Avenue North and Ford Street Parking Lot and the hearing of all interested parties. Motion, please.
I move.
All right. Items before you.
All right, thank you, councilors. Um, Councilor Tate, I'll let you go ahead and, um, preside over this particular item. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, this is, um, just an application for the Slice LLC that came before us for an events retail license and they're just adding, like, some more streets to be included, um, what we approved in public, um, safety. And so, is anyone here to speak for the item or against the item?
Thank you, Councilor Tate. All right, having no one, uh, to speak to the item, councilors, uh, we're ready to entertain the vote.
All right. Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Smithman.
Aye.
Council President Alexander.
Aye, that item passes. Thank you very much. Are there any other items, councilors?
Should be all ready.
Mr. Clerk, thank you very much. Councilors, at this time, we'd like to entertain your comments and, uh, we'll start. Are you ready down there, Councilor Wood?
Yes.
Thank you. Stay ready, stay ready. All right.
Uh, good morning, everybody. Wanted to shout out real quick, um, the District 1 interns, Cameron, who's not here, uh, but Jay, wave your hand back there in Kinsley. Um, did a great job this summer, uh, helping out in District 1 and, uh, kind of felt like, felt a little bad for them. Sometimes I know Amanda and Tevin really put them through a whole curriculum and so they, they, uh, like, I was like, y'all got it, y'all got it, y'all go ahead and, yeah. And so, I had to duck out on some of those classes, but, uh, did a great job. Wish y'all luck as y'all get ready to head back, uh, to school and, uh, hit the books hard. So, uh, hopefully that, this helps you focus and lock in at school because the real world is out here waiting for you. And so, uh, good luck this semester. Uh, also, the annual District 1 budget review is going to be held tonight at 6 o'clock at East Pennsyl Valley Rec Center. Uh, just a good opportunity to kind of get in depth and ask specific questions about the budget, what it means for the district and, uh, also look back to FY '22. And so, uh, enjoy doing that every year. And so, that's 6 o'clock tonight at the East Pennsyl Valley Rec Center. Uh, if anyone is interested in participating, come on out. Also, this Thursday, Spring Lake Neighborhood Association will meet at Huffman High School and via Zoom. That meeting is going to be at 6:30 PM and that's in the Huffman High School Library. Uh, the Echo Highlands Neighborhood Association will meet this Thursday, August 4th, also at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Uh, the Roebuck Neighborhood Association will meet Monday, August 8th at East Precinct and they have a Zoom option and that meeting is at 6:30 PM. Our Be Litter Free Community Cleanup, uh, will be this Saturday at 8:00 AM, meeting at Martha Gaskin's Elementary School. And so, uh, definitely invite everybody out to participate, get involved in your neighborhood meetings, um, just a great place to connect with your neighbors and, and really give your input on issues and concerns as well as bring solutions to the table. And so, uh, the doors are open and we invite you to come on in. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Woods. Councilor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Wyland Neighborhood will meet this evening at 6:00 PM in person at the Wyland Library located at 4300 Seventh Avenue North Wyland. You can also join this meeting via conference call by dialing 720-740-9863. The access code is 6589380. Civico Finley Neighborhood will meet on Wednesday, August the 2nd at 5:30 PM and their meeting conference call is well, the dial-in information is 952-2064918. The access code is 223418. North Birmingham Neighborhood will meet on Monday, August the 8th at 6:30 via conference call as well. The dial-in information is 425-4366348. The access code is 1023266. The next public safety meeting will be August the 9th at 1:00 PM. You can submit your agenda items to Brandon McCray no later than Thursday, August the 4th by 1:00 PM. Also, Central Pratt will do their Community Fund Day food games, bring your lawn chairs, tents, gazebo games, to House Sanford Rick Center located at 320 Avenue D, Birmingham, 35214. And that's going to be Saturday, August the 27th at 2022 from 10 to 2:00 PM. Also, councilors, I have some information that I will be sharing with you. I just stopped by the office and pick up this little, um, door hanger from New Life Roofing as a part of our service. They are offering, um, roof services, so certified inspectors, um, the finances is available through Alabama Power. They can set up a free inspection with no, no pressure. They'll work with your insurance company to eliminate most and, most of all the out-of-pocket expenses to arrange an appointment. You can call Tyrone Jones at 205-587-6135. So I have some of these, um, door hangers that I can provide to you all to stop by and pass this information to your constituents. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Tate. Councilor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Overton Neighborhood will be meeting, uh, Thursday at 6 o'clock via conference call this time. Eastwood Neighborhood will be meeting Thursday, August the 4th, uh, excuse me, Overton was Tuesday. Uh, Eastwood is Thursday, August the 4th at 6 o'clock at Habitat, which is, uh, 7952 Crestwood Boulevard. And also, just a reminder, uh, for the public that the Eastlake Farmers Market is still going on every Saturday, uh, through the end of October, uh, at Southeastlake United Methodist Church. Um, it's 8 o'clock to noon and there's a lot of, uh, different vendors out there that, that, that some rotate every week and some are pretty consistent. Uh, but if you do have an EBT card or you're part of the SNAP program, you can use your card there to, uh, to double up and get twice the produce than you would, uh, in a grocery store. So it's cool, a cool thing to check out on Saturday mornings and, uh, if you are, uh, if you benefit from the SNAP program, you can benefit, uh, twice as much out, uh, in Eastlake. So ask everybody to go check it out if you have not. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thanks for providing that information. Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. So always, the first Tuesday of August, um, tonight is National Night Out. National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie. And this is the 38th year that neighborhoods across Birmingham are participating in this observance with the Police Department. So even if you don't have a big block party planned, at nightfall, folks are encouraged to burn their porch lights. And if you can, uh, light them blue in honor of Birmingham Police Department, even better. Uh, folks are also encouraged to be out on their blocks this evening, uh, walk in their blocks or social, and socializing with neighbors. Um, if you're burning blue lights or otherwise decorating your home blue tonight, uh, be sure to contact Police Department Community Liaison Felicia Muron at the West Precinct, uh, so that her team can ride by. They, they actually, uh, judge and give prizes to, um, you know, award prizes to the homes that are decorated in blue. Tonight, the Fairview Neighborhood Meeting will meet at 5:30 PM via conference call. Uh, the dial-in, uh, you can get the dial-in information from the District 8 office. Also, at 6:30 tonight, the Thomas Neighborhood will meet in person at, uh, Mount Hebron Baptist Church in Thomas, because there are two Mount Hebrons, um, that's at 6:30. And please wear your mask and continue to be vigilant as the COVID numbers are on the rise. Also, at 3:30 PM today, the Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Committee will have a special called meeting. Uh, this meeting will take place here in the council chambers and the public is always , uh, welcome. Uh, also note that Parks and Rec is hosting a splash back-to-school water adventure. This will take place on August 6th, 2022 at Legion Field Stadium from 11 to 3:00. And they'll be turning the football field into a big splash pad and with a host of water activities, slip and slide, kickball, several water slide inflatables, uh, super soaker battle and much more. Y'all get your bathing suits ready? Also, uh, as part of their, uh, the Safe Haven Initiative, um, the Parks will host Parks After Dark Family Movie Night series and some other, um, I mean, there's a lot, but I'm going to try to run this down really quick. Uh, Parks After Dark, it's going to be a series starting, um, it's a series of Thursdays. The movie nights are a series of Thursdays starting August 11th and it'll go through August, October 13th and it starts at 6:00 PM. Uh, the locations are Patton Park on August 11th, ML King Rec Center on August 18th, Grayson Park on August 25th, One Pratt Park on September 1st, Ensley Park and Rec Center September 8th, Central Park Rec Center September 15th, Harrison Park Rec Center September 22, North Birmingham Rec Center September 29th, that's my mother's birthday. Fountain Heights Rec Center October 6th and Memorial Park Rec Center on October 13th. So for more information on these types of events, you can, um, go to birminghamal.gov and look at the Parks and Rec page. Um, on Wednesday, August 3rd, the mayor already told us about the Illuminating Chuddlesworth event. I just want to remind everyone to go to that. It's free. Uh, and, you know, he's so important to our community. And on, uh, Saturday, August 6th, from 10 to 2, uh, near the splash pad at Leighton Field, Tabernacle Baptist Church will be hosting, uh, their Faith Forks and Fitness Fair. So a lot going on in that area. That's at 600 Center Street North. And this event will focus on holistic wellness. It'll feature music, exercise demonstrations and a good word from Pastor Chris Hamlin. Um, so all are invited to the Tabernacle Baptist, um, church. Finally, the Five Points West Community will host and entertain families from its six neighborhoods and anyone else who comes out to celebrate with us on Saturday, August 13th. That's happening from 10 to 4 at the Birmingham Crossplex. And, um, it'll, it, it's surely to be entertaining. Um, they planned for this all summer, actually, and there'll be live entertainment and food and fun. So that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Councilor Moore?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, so today, we will have the Fairmont Neighborhood Association that will be meeting at 6:00 PM at Mount Carmel Christian Church. On Monday, August the 8th, we have the Ingle Nook Neighborhood, the Woodline Neighborhood and the Airport Highlands Neighborhood, uh, Neighborhood Association taking place at 6:00 PM as well. To find out, uh, any details, phone numbers, uh, Zoom links, please visit the, uh, District, the Birmingham City Council website and find District 4. Scroll all the way down. You'll be able to see not only the, um, access codes, but also the name of the different officers as well as their phone numbers. Um, so, first day of school is coming up, uh, August the 8th, on Monday. So, first day of school is coming up, August the 8th on Monday. So hopefully, everybody's excited about going back to school. Students start classes on Monday, like I said. And if you have not registered your child for the upcoming school year, you can do so by visiting the BHAMCitySchools.org/Register website. I would also encourage any local churches, any local businesses, and surrounding community partner or community organizations to just engage the schools on that first day. I know that a lot of people have folks standing outside, you know, encouraging the students as they walk in. And so it's a great opportunity just to, you know, reengage your school and get involved in that way. So just want to throw that out. There will be a back-to-school cleanup at Norwood Elementary this Saturday at 9:00 AM. If you'd like to join the Norwood Neighborhood this Saturday, please call Patrick Tally at 205-470-8426. There will also be a neighborhood cleanup in Fairmont this Saturday at 7:00 AM at the Fairmont Park. For more information, please call Mr. Trey Miller at 205-470-9360. Let me see, there's a back-to-school fair taking place at Mount Olive Baptist Church this Saturday from 11 to 1:00 PM. Students will have an opportunity to come out, get supplies for school, but then also get encouragement and words of advice about how to navigate this new school year. Let me see, Tuskegee Polio, Tuskegee University is having a statue unveiling this Thursday, August the 4th at 2:00 PM in recognition of the Tuskegee Polio Recognition Project. Let me see, the Tuskegee Polio Recognition Project is promoted by the Rotary District 6880. It's an effort to recognize the treatment and rehabilitation of the Black population stricken with the polio virus and the important research conducted at Tuskegee University. So if you would like to find out more information about that, please give a phone call to 334-791-8921. Had an opportunity to go to a high school graduation this weekend, and it was by far one of the coolest high school graduations that I've ever gone to. Reason being is because it wasn't just, you know, students that, you know, were 18 years old that were coming out of high school, but it was folks who decided and really made a promise to themselves that, hey, I'm going to go back and get my high school diploma. So you have folks that, you know, were in their 30s, 40s, 50s. One lady even crossed the stage and, you know, somebody yelled in the crowd, like, "I'm proud of you, girl mama." Like, "I'm proud of you. You go, girl." So I just got to give a big shout out to Dr. Tellis with the Tellis Educational Services program. It's a 10-week program that is offered, like I said, for folks to go back and get their high school diploma. They do high school diploma state tests, one-on-one tutoring, test-taking strategies, hands-on support in all subject areas, job applications, online services, job placements, all kinds of cool things. If you would like to learn more about Dr. Tellis and his program, please visit tellis, T-E-L-L-I-S, educationalservices.com. Again, telliseducationalservices.com. I just thoroughly enjoyed myself at that graduation, and I'm thankful for Ms. Rachel Green for inviting me. It wasn't a dry eye in the room as those folks crossed the stage, because you could definitely tell that there was some struggle and there was some dedication to them accomplishing that goal. The Woodline Night Market is taking place August 13th from 5:00 to 9:00 PM on 55th Place South. So please come out, support small businesses. They are the backbone of our city, and so we definitely want to make sure that we do that. And I guess the last two things that I want to say is Hope Church, I want to say thank you to you all for inviting me out. They had a service where they actually celebrated first responders over in the Inglebrook Neighborhood. So thank you to Pastor Joanna Jackson and her congregation. They celebrated the firefighters and police officers and everybody that serves over in that area. And then, like I said, the last thing I would say is I just want to encourage everybody to really take care of themselves. I've gotten several phone calls, seen several social media posts where folks are really allowing stress and their workload to take them out or take them down. I've seen several folks that have gone to the hospital because they are not building in time to rest or time to just have some self-care. And it's folks that's in their 30s that are having heart problems, which is a problem in and of itself. And so really just want to encourage everybody, man. Look, listen to your body, drink some water, eat some vegetables, rest, yeah, and go to sleep. Don't be watching Netflix and, you know, all that type of stuff. I'm guilty myself, but still. Yeah, just take care of yourself. And those conclude my reports.
Thank you, Councilor Moore. Councilor Abbott?
I love it. Well, y'all, it's August. I don't even know what happened to July. It just went away. The next planning and zoning meeting is going to be on August 10th at 3:30 PM here in the council chambers. Our Neighborhood Association for this evening is Forest Park South Avondale. They meet tonight at 6:30 PM at the Avondale Library. And, you know, Dr. Lee and I are encouraging residents to go to our website simply because we can't remember all the stuff that's going on. I mean, you listen to everybody's reports, we can't even remember all the details. And so we're trying to put everything out on that website, and it's BHAMDistrict3.com. So I hope everybody has a safe week and that all those people driving insanely will control themselves, because I've witnessed a few of them in my neighborhood. And I can't believe that they're dumb enough to ruin their tires that way. I've never seen so much rubber left on the pavement, but I guess they have lots of money to buy new tires. I'm not sure my car would do that.
I think you're right. Thank you, Mrs. Abbott.
I'm not going to try, just in case you're wondering, but...
I'll try.
In my car, thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott.
I know it won't make those kind of noises, because, you know, the cars now, you can turn on your roaring noise or flip the switch and turn it back off again. But when they go through the neighborhoods at 3:00 AM, they like to turn it on. So we'll all know they're there.
Thank you. Dr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. The Eastlake Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at 6:00 PM at Household of Faith Church. That's 7501 Division Avenue. Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood Association also meets tonight. That's at 6:30 PM at Avondale Library. Really looking forward to telling them that we have funded the 41st Street project. The initial federal funding for that project was awarded in 2015. And, you know, one of the most exciting aspects of that project is that it's going to address the chronic flooding situation on 41st Street. So, you know, for once, we will have some good news to deliver. So excited about that. And the Transportation Committee will meet on Monday, August 8th, 2:00 PM here in the council chambers. Items can be submitted to the agenda by contacting Kimberly Phillips at kimberly.phillips@birminghamal.gov. And finally, just wanted to tell you about some events that Urban Impact is putting on in August. August 19th, they will have a Fourth Avenue Market from 4:00 to 8:00 PM in the Waits Parking Lot. That's Fourth Avenue in the Civil Rights District. August 20th, there's an event called an Art Initiative, and it's, you can volunteer to assess with refreshing the street murals. If you're familiar with the corner of 17th Street and Fourth Avenue North, there's some street art there that kind of commemorates some of the music and other notable things that the district is known for. Again, that's August 20th. August 27th will be the 19th Annual Taste of Fourth Avenue Jazz Festival. For additional information and vendor applications, you can go to www.forthavenewjazz.org. Again, that's www.forthavenewjazz.org. And that concludes my announcements. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Dr. Quinn. Madam Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I have exciting news. I don't know if you've driven by 20 Midtown, but Panda Express is open. So that's very exciting. We're supposed to have a Malo's, hopefully an Outback. That's pretty big, because we don't have one necessarily in Birmingham. So I'm really excited about that area. It's going to have like a nail salon and a gym. And then they're going to have, so Zoe's Kitchen is closing down. So it's like the, whatever, I forgot the name of the company who's buying them out.
Kavan.
Yeah, Kavan. And they're going to be down there, too. So, you know, after council meeting, we can always go down there and get some lunch. As far as neighborhood meetings, Oakwood Place Neighborhood will meet at Harrison Park Recreation Center today at 4:00. The Mason City Neighborhood will meet today at 4:00, 4:30 via teleconference. The call-in number is 712-770-8017, and the code is 843426. The next PIC meeting will be today at 2:00 PM. The next Budget and Finance Meeting will meet on Monday, August 8th at 3:30 PM in the council chambers. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. Email submissions to liquidity.wilson@birminghamal.gov. We will be having our School Supplies Drive tomorrow from 4:00 to 5:00 at the West End Library. This is in partnership with Senator Roger Smithman and the Birmingham Urban League. Also, the Respect Organization will have their 27th Annual Back-to-School Drive-Thru Rally on Saturday, August 6th starting at 10:00 AM. There'll be free book bags, school supplies, we'll have books for kids from Better Basics. And then, after you leave Respect or you miss Respect, come down to Madam Presidents' School Supplies Drive. So we'll have plenty of opportunities on the West Side. No other organizations are having them to get your school supplies. And then for our schools in District 6, this Sunday, August 7th, Hamp Hill will have their open house at 2:00 PM. Washington K-38 will have their open house at 2:00 PM for the middle school and 3:00 PM for the elementary school. So the, well, the Land Bank Authority has an opening for Director Position 3, whose term expired last month. All interested applicants can email me at crystal.smithman@birminghamal.gov. The deadline is Tuesday, August 16th at 5:00 PM. And as always, for more exciting information on events, stay up to date on the trash and brush pickup and everything else, visit our website at www.d6bham.com. And also, I forgot to say congratulations to Councilor Abbott and Tate for item number one. That is huge. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Madam Pro Tem. Announcements for District 7, as Madam Pro Tem has already reiterated, we will have a backpack giveaway from 3:00 to 4:00 PM on Saturday, August 6th. It'll be at the Greater Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church Parking Lot. That's at 2135 Jefferson Avenue Southwest. Also, the Oxmore Elementary School will be hosting their first annual back-to-school bash. That will also be on Saturday, August 6th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. That's at the school, which is located at 3600 Sidney Drive in Oxmore. On Monday, August 8th, the Oxmore Neighborhood Association will meet at the Oxmore Rec Center, and that'll be at 6:00 PM, and that's at 1992 Weenona Oxmore Road. I would like to thank each counselor that has mentioned today the August 2022, the bulk trash pickup schedule was posted for us. Want to thank administration for getting that out. I noticed a little bit of a difference. There's a second page that now alphabetizes when those pickups will occur. And I think that's very helpful to us, because I used to try to go down and pick, look at them. So thank you for changing that format. Thank those councilors that have posted that, and you can also get that on individual councilors' pages. I think I saw it on a couple of stories on Facebook, so thank you all. And really, we just want you to adhere to this schedule and please be mindful of it. So it's one of the tenants of us helping to keep our city clean. And speaking of community cleanliness, I want to thank those residents, the neighborhood leadership for the Riley-Travalick Neighborhood. They had a cleanup this past Saturday. We were very excited to see all the residents and the leadership within the neighborhood. We thank Ms. Springer, the Riley Neighborhood President. She had several visiting Neighborhood Association Presidents that came out and helped her, as well as through Blackbusters. Towards the end of the last hour of the cleanup, we did have about 50 young men, students, who came out. They were from a local, I don't know if it was a high school fraternity or a local social organization. I apologize, I did not get the name of the organization. A lot of those members do attend Weenona High School. So we just want to thank the youth that came out on Saturday. You could have been anywhere else, but you decided to come out and give some community service, so we thank them. There will be a video following the meeting today that discusses that and gives you an overview of our cleanup day on Saturday. Lastly, I just want to end, I know, Councilor Moore, you talked about the graduation ceremony that you attended. I do want to congratulate those spring, excuse me, summer graduates for the city of Birmingham. There was a graduation ceremony for them, I believe, last Thursday or Friday. And I didn't attend it, and normally, you know, we get all excited about the regular graduation. And so I always like to try to get some presents for that summer graduation as well. Sometimes these students are part of our dropout recovery program, so it shows them wanting to come back and, you know, make good on that promise for themselves and their parents. So congratulations to them and for the faculty of those programs. All right? Well, councilors, anything else? Yes, or Councilor Moore?
Listen, two last things that I forgot to make mention of. Tonight, at 6, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM, there's supposed to be a community yoga taking place at Willowood Rec Center, 5312 Georgia Road. To register, go to sacredbodyfit.com. So that's one thing. And then the last thing is, I wanted to say congratulations to school board member Derek Billups and his wife. They celebrated 22 years of marriage, and so just wanted to say congrats to y'all. And that's it. That's all I got.
Thank you so much, Councilor Moore. At this time, we do want to also thank those officers on duty today, Cedric Pinkert from City Hall and Clyde Coleman from the North Precinct. Thank you so much for your service and maintaining and keeping us safe. At this time, councilors, can we entertain a motion?
Second.
All in favor, let it be done for a second.
Aye. All right. Thank you, councilors. Meeting is adjourned. Hi, Councilor Wardine Alexander. We're here in District 7. We're in the Riley Neighborhood of District 7. We're having one of our cleanups today. We have neighborhood leadership, D7 staff, volunteers from across the city.
It is their project to get us here this morning. So I want to thank you, Madam President, and for all of the support that you get here in the community. We know community cleanliness is so important to us, as was said in the prayer. We want not only this neighborhood, but District 7, city of Birmingham, to be a place, a great place, real working place. So I appreciate the volunteers like you, people who are concerned about the community and want to keep us clean. So thank you so much this morning. Appreciate you all. We're going to end July the way we began it, keep it keeping us clean. Thank you.
We're excited to be out here today. We're ending the month of July the way it started with community cleanliness, and so we just want to keep our neighborhoods clean, and we invite everyone to join us anytime. Our initiative during the fall will be to increase the number of cleanups. Take care.
And for more from the Birmingham City Council, follow along with us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Stay safe, Birmingham.
I'm Darryl Ledwin, City Councilor for District 5. This morning, we're over at Hays, Hays 38.
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................